No. Live on YouTube, right?
Yeah.
Why I just there no live? What did you mess with? You know what, let's close this.
Oh, why?
Close that for a second.
Live on YouTube. Is it only in the webinar?
No. Try that.
For YouTube?
Yeah. I don't know if it's gonna work. What you're emailing?
Should be.
Hello folks, I'm sorry, but the district policy at this point is that anyone entering any physical building should wear a mask.
We're here to discuss the fact that you don't want to.
That's still the basic policy at this point in time, we'd like to discuss or report on that, we're not going to do so, but it's required to wear a mask.
YouTube.
Well, I find it difficult to understand what you're saying when I'm on the mascot.
Oh, I'm sorry. So what's required is that all personnel who enter the building are required to wear a mask. And so we have some masks outside in the hall if you'd like to have one. But otherwise, we won't be able to continue on, we may not be able to continue on with the meeting.
There's masks on.
Yeah.
There's a mask on, I don't see why I should have.
I'm sorry, so that's the policy to wear for the district.
Apologize if I seem a little bit hostile, but this is getting to be a little bit nonsensical.
So we're having issues going on YouTube going live. If we could, yeah, please, sorry.
Know what we could do at a minimum, Cliff, we could just record the meeting and post it to YouTube.
We are recording. Okay. Yeah.
So I think what we do is just let it go.
Okay.
And then we can post it to YouTube later, cut the video.
Yeah, yeah.
So you can save the video.
Okay. Alright, so we'll do that.
Yeah.
We all stay at state standing for a second. Oh, no, sorry, participants of all members, please stay standing. Can I have a motion to adjourn into executive session? Questions and comments? All those in favor say aye.
This is your slide.
We're gonna adjourn to executive session, we'll be stepping off for a private meeting.
Let me mention, remember, that the purpose of the executive session is to review recommendations of the committee on special education and the preschool committee on special education, and also a personal.
And so we'll be stepping off, we're no more than 15 minutes, we'll be back after we have our third session.
And hopefully we'll have.
I'm here to speak against.
Oh, how are you? I'm good. I just, I mean, I haven't. Wait, this is not so far away that comes dinner. Oh, top, sorry, yes. My friend said, oh, yeah, I'm. I wouldn't even recognize you guys if I saw you. Wait, so. I'm thinking that. What, where are your pieces? Oh, okay, okay. What's those called?
So, Derek's question.
Oh. It's, it's, I mean, it's.
It's your chance.
I was laughing.
It's second. You don't have that.
Policy here.
I think we're working against. Alright, so. Um. Yeah. Well, same with the, the same, alright, I'm sorry. Oh, you offer. Oh, okay. You're gonna hit, we have to mask them. Yeah, we just did. You're gonna, yeah, you guys have, it's district policy, if you want to stay here, you have to have a mask on, they said. They're gonna be back in 15 minutes. They're outside, there's some outside. We tried. We tried. It's gonna be all the way. If you want, if you want to speak, I gotta, we gotta speak. Oh, sign, they always have a problem with signing.
Yeah. We started back up in.
It doesn't even say we're just sitting here, I worry about that.
The notes are really supportive of the job. Great, great. You hear that we don't have enough.
And he was gonna come just. So. Now, they can't really. Yeah.
There's a boat, my, my, that's a boat migratory.
So, I'm very, yeah. Where does it say? I assume that's what they left in school, they didn't get to do it.
Yeah. Well, it's like, it's like, middle school, like, they just fill out an envelope. They didn't know, like, we're just trying to stand to work. Sort of like, that reminds me of that, if they, if no one ever taught them.
No, they said. District whites.
It's easier to learn.
They would do motion to. Yeah. National banks. I have so many.
Yeah.
Cameron. Cameron, let's see.
There's a band, that's not, that's not their first one, thank you, that's.
Yeah, that's what I. That's what I worry about. Okay, well, that's gonna be some good. Sure. That's.
More than that, that's more.
Yeah, they just told us. If we didn't. Last thing.
Yeah, they were having it live. Yeah. I think I heard Mash say something, okay, what about this?
Every, every five minutes, change of point, bare mask, go bare mask.
Right, and that's what was the last thing I brought interesting. People that ask you're like, you're wearing one, you're basically. There, and it's always sexy. I mean, it's not wear change, they. How much you owe the change? Oh, I tell you that. Did they mean? No. Oh, no, that was somebody that's.
I know.
Hey, maybe they saw. He came in. Yeah, they is getting.
Oh, yeah, yeah, everybody.
Because they already have standard subjects. Yeah, it was very new summer, because they missed the program, they could go to school. They take extended work. Yeah, it was beginning July, something like in the ones. So I said, very sorry, but I'm sorry, they just sent some things and girls. Did it. A lot of fall. The nicest thing to see in space.
I know.
And she was. I know.
It wasn't an option that whole. Finished the job, he started.
Yeah.
I'll do most in the. Sixty, most.
So, yeah. My neighbors coming to the session. You'll find out, you know, to be.
Okay.
So, yeah. So, you're gonna be going out to the bathroom and stop.
So it's a possibility.
No, 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 like, you know, I just wanna, no, you'll see that. We're gonna, you can sit up, we're sitting here currently, they speak for themselves. People, you know, like, and like, and like, when I saw my things, I missed it. So I just wanna get another point with you, because that's just a big.
Okay. Actually, I had.
No, no, I can play, but I said, so, like, like, sex and stuff. They asked, you have to say, wear a mask, so they find those out, you got them.
Let me ask you this, if I came to your house and took your children? Okay, I'm gonna take your child. Okay.
But it wasn't the way.
Would you allow that? And why would we allow these guys to dictate things to us, to our four R kids?
And the land board meeting, masks weren't required, so why are they required now? Sorry? The way I support meeting, there were not, masks were not required, so why are we protecting now? No, sorry. No.
Most likely.
Yeah, because the, what's happening is guy writing outside will change, so that's probably the guy who is of, of CDC, which I understand. When you look at me about my kids, that's just me and my. Yeah, I mean, it's not the problem, Facebook, so if you don't know, if you don't know, like, that's all good.
When do we make this control over? I think. Of even. When do we make this control?
Like, he said, right.
What we want our kids to do or not to do. We are looking forward to.
When we, when we.
Still want. I saw the same thing. I saw the same thing, that's common sense. That's common sense. We're talking about an mRNA shot that has not ever been certified. It was shot down in 1967 when it tried to eat teen school kids that got miserably sick. And they decided that probably wasn't a good idea, so let's test on 32 lab animals that all died when injected. Then they revamped it, and 12 animals got really sick, and the rest died, so they gave it up until now.
I mean, I just feel like, I don't need.
I will never give it a shot.
I think you go to the doctors.
I went with the doctor.
I just, and it's like, and so it's like, I'm with friends that.
Bye.
They're not sick, they help us. And I was just, I heard you that.
Bye.
I saw us getting a little sun, and more, more like these fruits. I have my own, but it's a little side, I have no one.
What's their African spread?
Not necessarily. You don't know that for sure. If people are scary, everybody's scared. It's not that kind of.
They're, they're creating this fear, it's nonsense.
The bottom line is the kids can't breathe. That is the bottom line. Do you have the young children? Sorry? Do you have young children? Yeah, but my son's at probation, he has to wait. Okay, it's, it's a lot easier for adults to handle it than children. Oh, I agree. And they can't see, they can't speak, they have glasses, they fog, it's ridiculous. And it's not affecting the children. I agree.
It isn't.
So, so your choice is your choice, but we don't have the choice to make our decision for our children.
That's right.
So you're upset about you, we're upset about our children. That's what I'm asking. Right, that's the worst.
That is.
We're being told and discriminated against that we, our kids don't wear masks. I, yeah, our kids have to wear masks, and it's, we don't have the choice.
Listen, if this woman wants her kid to wear a mask, then she can let her kid wear a mask, but if this guy, he doesn't want his kid to wear a mask, he shouldn't have to.
That's your choice, you don't want to vaccinate your children, don't vaccinate your children, it's your choice. That's the world we're supposed to live in. So we can go to school, we have to get vaccinated to go to school, don't they? I mean, we're not vaccinated.
This is not.
No, I wonder, so we said, only in New York, I mean, really, you can get exemptions.
This is not anybody's, remotely the same. And if they want to try and bring that up, that is a joke.
They knew you. They knew the thing, it's a person.
Yeah, immunizations are not vaccine.
Yes.
I mean, immunizations are not vaccines. Immunizations are not vaccines. And COVID vaccine isn't actually a vaccine anymore.
Nobody's ever mandated to get the flu shot, ever, no, no adult, ever. It's the same thing. It's like chicken pox and, like, tennis, that's what the shot is for, like, like 10 years. Yes, I get that, so, yes. My son had get flu, so, he's polished. Oh, yeah, no. Well, that's not mandated. That was a needle. He shouldn't have had to. He's told, and he's losing his rights of words to the schools. No, I just, I mean. No, 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 I understand what you're saying. Yeah. It's very hard, if I can speak for anybody, but me, it's for young children. It's, 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 they need. Right. Great, yeah. That's it, that, I think that's why I'm wrong here. As for our kids. Discovery Center doesn't manage. And so. And so, these. No, my, my son. That's okay, so it's like. That's for the public, not for schools. They just didn't say. They had taken the number in the picture. Yeah. My son went to school all year, last year without a mask. Right. Well, I appreciate you asking. Yes. I agree. There's a little bit of appreciation of your asking. Yeah. Yeah, right, my brother. The thing is, people, you're getting a little. Word.
Okay.
We get together with time. Right. But this is all very much. Yeah. What's your seven? Oh, this is college, okay. So why are you here? It is, yeah. Yeah, it's kind of like. Yeah, yeah, okay. So, yeah. Yeah, that's what my dad said, he's like, I want to see three girls, it's not now, it's such a, the other, right?
That's a pretty solid girl.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm super excited about. All of them have masks, he's taking. Well, it's surprising, again, I don't mind. Right. Right now, we technically have a jet. I can't wait to go see them. Give me some good time. Well, and the kids are, you know, the kids are very, I don't care, they're just from June outside. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Right. It's, you know what? So. Oh, right. If we just sit back, and let everybody, you know, tell you what to do. It's, 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 it's not, it's gonna continue to go that way. In our, we're not. I think. The bottom line is that we, it's feel comfortable enough that parts and works, they've been fine. Oh, no. It should not be on. That's what I'm. They can't breathe. Yes, according to this, they have to, like, for activities, so it's not only, it's not like, three, four, they get it, but they'll have. That's what I get, that would be another year. Yeah, I don't know.
Yes.
Yeah. Has everyone signed in up there on the sheet?
Yes, now and there.
That's the word for the public, that, visitors, they're, they're, in case we have to do any contact, we need to go put this in the room. There's a maximum of time. Sir, there's masks out in the. No, I appreciate that. No, you're fine, sir. I look, there's masks, probably we are required to. I appreciate that. Yeah.
That's what I said.
We all will continue to learn as a mascot. Public here on the district wide school safety. This is a moment for us to open up a discussion on the, the school, the district wide safety plan. Does anyone have anything that they would like to address, or, 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 comments on, on the plan that was proposed, words of the last week? Tom, Tom, we're available, so we like to discuss anything, or.
Very well.
So, this is a question, we have all time on agenda items. This is on agenda items only, this is actually against the voice of the public. We have a little section of reading where we address area, so if anyone in the public has something they would like to make mention of on the agenda itself, you know, this is a practice. And so now we move on to reports, and so Sampson, we will have some reports on the school, school running, of the board.
Yes, so for the high school, a lot of different sports teams and marketing have started the preseason. And I still kind of think working to welcome incoming to new students, so that'll be happening within the next week or so.
Hey, thanks, thanks so much. And so now I move on to work president, are there any liaison or subcommittee reports? Anyone attending the subcommittees or any activations?
Yeah, sure. I was at the, one of the subcommittees, and, you know, I was there as an observer, and I just saw that everything that we took care of is on the website, and there's a lot of that's a motivation to. A good resource to go to.
Okay. So, we, we bring, as part of member replacement, we have, we have John here. Yeah, and so John Rontsch is agreed to return as the replacement, the number for law hacker boss, or, or, it's in place. And we're very pleased that John returned back, I believe that he's gonna be returning at, at the 2nd September. Expect to come back for us, so John, John, he wants to go. Returning to the board and serving as a.
One, yeah, the one.
And there's also, we have the. We met upstairs with, yeah, the new incoming, some of the new incoming staff, teachers upstairs, we have a reception upstairs here. Starting at five, and we go nice and soon. And we'll be having a luncheon on September 1st that'll be right down below us, if I'm not mistaken, and that's gonna be where a lot of our pick out, or, or. The insurance staff will be hosting that, and we'll be providing the emails, we'll be introducing ourselves, and welcoming any of the new or incoming staff.
Do you have to wear masks for that too?
Excuse me?
Do you have to wear masks for that too?
It'll be outdoors.
Thank you. Tonight, we will have a presentation of, of back to school for September. There are a couple issues that. The culmination of the committee meetings that took place, so there's a number of those, and the steering committee. And you have the written, and that copy tonight, which being presented, we go through the highlights of that. And try to answer any questions you might have, or, or, comments there on it, so. Yeah, that, before we get into that. Just. The issues that we, they have here in the district, across the state, across the country. Um, something that plays into our plan, uh, we do require masks. As is, um, for indoors for all vaccinated, unvaccinated individuals, so students or adults. And I would just like to share, uh, we have made that determination, but there's some recent information that came out that also supports on the position of, of the district. And this is from Governor Hopeful, uh, mask mandate is coming. Uh, this was just announced this, this afternoon. And I would share with the board on her first day as governor, Kathy Hopeful announced that her priority number one is making sure children are safe in school. Including one, legally directing the Department of Health to institute universal masking for anyone entering their schools. Two, launching back to school COVID-19 testing programs to make testing for students and staff widely available and convenient. And three, developing a method to require vaccination for all school personnel within options to test out weekly, at least for now. Hopeless said she will announce a series of school related policies later this week. So she is, she's quickly, uh, putting information together and, uh, she's working through the New York State Department of Health on those requirements. Uh, the second piece of information, uh, I have this information sent out to the board, so you should have received it. Uh, but this is, uh, a letter of clarification. It's coming from our school attorney, so Holden Sivinski. And it says that United National Insurance Company, which is our insurance carrier, has recently provided a letter to certain clients stating that they deny insurance coverage to school districts insured by United National who are sued for being responsible for COVID transmission. Where the school district fails to follow CDC or health department recommendation and best practice, not just legally required. Um, and it goes on, probably a little bit more information. That is the main message, uh, that's coming from school attorney. And read that so that the public is also aware of that. And as a district, we, we expect, uh, in the next couple of days, at this earliest, uh, to give some, uh, some more guidance, uh, coming out of the state health department. Testing, screening, uh, mask requirements. Just wanted to take, uh, you know, some time to ensure that we're, with everybody. And so at this point, I will, Mr. Chasten will have, has a presentation on our plan. And where, uh, where everybody can find our, our written plan itself.
Thank you, Superintendent Aaron. I just saw under where, uh, we look up at the screen now in the top left corner, it says recording. So we're on a Zoom, we're recording this, however, the link to live stream this is not working. So we're recording this, so what will happen is we'll get this to our IT department and they will then put it on YouTube. So we'll be on YouTube tomorrow for everyone to see this. Unfortunately, uh, tonight it's not being livestreamed. And we're just not sure, there's no, the link is not working. We're not sure why. But just so you know that, it will be on, uh, YouTube tomorrow. So.
Can you record everybody that's here? And that does seem people there. Are you recording us? Here for a reason?
When people come up to the board and public will ask, people step forward, give their name and their address and then, uh, while they're standing there, they'll be able to, uh, see where they're at.
I'm not putting my address on YouTube, sir. That's a stupid thing.
We signed in up there. You don't have to say everything.
That's fine. That's fine.
Okay, so, uh, thank you. So tonight we're just going to present a back to school, our twenty one, twenty two plan. And with that, uh, we have on our website for communication for our community and for our staff and the students. We have a webpage, a new webpage. Now just click on this link. And so here's our webpage. Uh, if you're on our website, you know, it's at the very top, we have back to school twenty one, twenty two. And that's where you would click, it takes you to this webpage right here. Uh, we've noticed with this webpage in the right, we have some health and safety guidance. So the American Academy of Pediatrics and we also have CDC guidance here, so links to those sites. We also have health and safety guidance under New York State Education Department and then some communication they sent us. Uh, we have here an area, if someone has some questions, they could email us. But beginning tomorrow or the next day, we'll also get a form here where people can put any comments. So that'll be, if you look tomorrow or the next day, they'll be updated. But we'll have where people can actually enter other comments. Uh, which really important here is our community, our committee planning. If here, if you click on this, it will take you to our steering committee, the presentation where we met, our instructional subcommittee and our operational subcommittee. So these are the different dates where we've met to come up with our existing. Uh, so also if here you will see that we have our back to school plan and I'll bring it up a little bit. But this is also our decision making structure is here. So, and that's just read through the process of developing a comment for the webpage. As I mentioned, that'll be added, uh, tomorrow, the next day.
Yeah, you're good. Okay, good.
Okay, thanks. So here's our.
No, sorry. I'll just leave it for a second. Okay.
So our structure for decision making, uh, here it is our governance committee comprised of a cabinet or a vice president. And that makes decisions based on, think of this as an upside down funnel. So, uh, that comes right to that point. And below that, we have a reopening steering committee, which represents from our stakeholder groups. And that steering committee hears from our instructional subcommittee and our operational subcommittee. And those again are comprised of many stakeholders. So we, all the information that happens to those subcommittees and our working groups, then it's followed up to our reopening steering committee and then to the governance committee to devise our plans. So here are the dates from our website for the steering committee and the operations and the instructional subcommittees. So if you look at it this way, it's kind of clockwise. July twenty eighth, we had our first meeting with the steering committee, talking about reopening and guides that we had at that point. I spoke about our operational subcommittee and structural subcommittees. And then it goes August third, they met, the operations committee and information that was shared. And then August fifth, they also met for instructional subcommittee. And then that information was shared on August eleventh back to steering committee. So if you follow my cursor, then after that, we had our August twelfth, our subcommittee for operations, then our August thirteenth instructional. Then it came to our August nineteenth steering committee. So all that information talking about, you know, what are recommendations for mask wearing? What's recommendations for riding on school bus, uh, instructional? All the information was discussed and shared, opportunities for everyone to be heard. And then we brought in resources through county department of health was with us at different, uh, points. Uh, we had our school physicians and all the information was spoken about. And then we used this for the steering committee to develop our back to school point. And this is the best, okay, so order that, we have that in front of you here. This is just a copy, what's on our website. And if you look at this, we have a draft here because this is August twentieth. This is going to be changing, we'll probably change this draft to, you know, uh, last day or that was updated, updated on whatever day. But here's our plan going forward. There is fifteen bullets here in key takeaway points. And as you look through that, it's all areas for, that we need to know for school reopening, uh, for in the fall. And then below those key takeaway points is all the rationale and the decision making that came from those subcommittees and the steering committee. So in essence, this is a way to communicate with all stakeholders. This is decision making for the district and here's how we obtain and arrive at the various decisions that are made in this. So the rest of my, uh, slides show here, it's nineteen slides, obviously, you know, so you know how long we'll present there. Um, basically, we're just looking at some of these points and we are just going to show you what happened in our subcommittee and how we arrived through it. So first of all, it will be a six day cycle, five days, uh, per week, uh, per schedule for students and, uh, teachers in school. So that's what we're coming up with. And we also have, unless there's a need to close school, the superintendent decision. And that would be based on, you know, availability of staff or the, uh, public health officials saying, yeah, you need to close school for a duration for whatever reason. But a superintendent would make decisions based on availability of nurses or teachers, professionals, school bus drivers, et cetera. So here is, there's a lot of questions out there about hybrid or remote learning. So right now the district is not planning wide availability of either of us. We are in the process, however, finalizing these plans for academic support in case that there is some contact tracing which has, happens and students are quarantined or staff are quarantined at home. So in the process of developing those plans, what that will look like. Here we know that all students and staff that are, that are going to be required to wear masks indoors and on the buses. Superintendent spoke of some reasons, but we also, with our subcommittees, we looked at the CDC recommendations. We looked at the AAP recommendations, Broom County Department of Health, New York State Department of Education. We also, we know our governor now is proposing this. Our insurance company is saying, hey, if you don't follow these, these guidelines, then you might not have coverage. And also the other school districts and BT Boses in our region have all said that they are going to require people to wear masks. So we looked at that. One thing you need to know is that masks have not been required that we worn outside, but you can wear masks outside if you choose to do so. And with this, the, uh, this is what superintendent spoke about earlier. We just added that in there, uh, that our insurance company is saying you may jeopardize insurance coverage if you're sued. And it's, if we don't, if we don't follow CDC. So this slide here speaks about the COVID-19 transmission. So basically, when you look at all the guidance, it says three feet of physical distancing or social distancing if you will in school that need to be implemented when possible. And that when possible means, well, what if you can't for certain areas, maybe some small percentage areas you can't. So they also say layering of multiple prevention strategies will be any fact. So what is layering? This is layering. They're recommending physical distancing, which we are, we're saying three feet, a minimum three feet. Uh, COVID screening, looking at having our screener again this school year. Uh, isolation and contact tracing that through Broom County Department of Health, they help us with that. If anyone in our district comes in contact with a positive case. Uh, group, uh, mask wearing, so yes, we're saying everyone needs to wear masks. An individual mask wearing, so even if you're working in small groups, one or two people, yeah, everyone needs to be wearing a mask when you're in school. A routine disinfection cleaning, we're doing that with our buildings and grounds, uh, that's taken care of. And also we're telling people with that screener, if you're feeling ill, you need to stay at home and be tested. And that's what the recommendation is. Also improved ventilation is a layered approach. We do know we have updated HDA, yeah, our middle school and area complex and also at Glenwood complex, through the capital project. And we've had all of our ventilation tested, uh, with our contractors, uh, P and J. And we changed all of our filters periodically and we do that more frequently than was suggested. And when we had everything tested, our ventilation of all of our building meets or exceeds the New York State departments. Uh, and then the top one here is promoting vaccination. Uh, you know, the district wants to take point is we're not actually promoting, but we know Broom County Department of Health and we're working in conjunction with them. And actually just so you know, we do have, uh, a vaccination clinic here that will be held in Central Junior Gymnasium. And that'll take place Friday, uh, August twenty seventh from three to six PM, open to the community. Anyone that's under sixteen, I believe, has to be with parent consent. And, uh, also the, this is Pfizer, so the second vaccination for that, they had the two vaccination. And that's, uh, three weeks later on Friday, September seventeenth, and that's from three to six PM here in the same location. And we haven't advertised that and we'll continue to advertise that. So that's the layered approach, uh, that is recommended by all the guidance. So lunches has been a topic. Uh, we are saying students may eat lunch inside and we will maximize physical distancing to the greatest extent possible. The high school, people asked about that. Our high school, just so you know, has, was not built or designed to have a closed campus for lunch. And we actually went into high school, our high school administration measured, uh, the available space that we could have lunch for our students. And coming back full capacity, we do not have the space in the high school to distance students during lunchtime. So with that, we are looking at having an open campus for grades nine and twelve. And some pluses with this is that it does allow physical distancing for those students who choose to stay in the high school to eat their lunch. So it does create that space which all the guides recommends. So that, that's one area. And, uh, just so you know, that with lunches across the district, free lunch and breakfast will be available to every student this school year. And that was extended by, uh, uh, food services through the federal. And so with this one, uh, New York State that has indicated physical distancing is not required on school buses. And that means more than one student can sit in a seat on a bus where last year was really one of, you had to have one student per seat.
That makes sense.
So with this, uh, but students and staff must wear masks while on the bus. And that it just comes directly from CDC.
Do they have to order a meal before getting on the bus?
So our next slide here is speaking about disinfecting in the buildings and our buses. Uh, and so that will take place, as I mentioned earlier. And, you know, if a student is sick or a staff member is in the building or on the buses are sick, then we make sure that that space is present to and clean before that space is used, it's shut down, it's cleaned during the recommended time of Broom County. And Tewa County gives us specifics on that before that space is available to be used again. And as always, we have ordered a ton of hand sanitizer, it's available for students and staff. And we also have the recommendations of washing hands frequently. This next slide is about working with the local county Department of Health. And we have, Mr. Comerford is sitting here with us today. Uh, him and I work in conjunction with this and we've been on the phone and email communication with the county. It's almost daily, it is daily and multiple times daily. Uh, as of today, we had more, uh, conversations with them. So we work very closely, what I'm trying to say, with the county and they help guide us for any type of contact tracing, any questions we have. They work really close with us in collaboration process. And they will help us with any, if anyone's quarantining. This next slide, uh, speaks about indoor activities and outdoor with extracurricular, meaning clubs after school, uh, band or club, et cetera, athletics. So if anything's happening in the building, then that does, you have to have the masks on, that is required. Uh, we did speak with the county today. If we have any athletic events, we actually, they will be recorded on the huddle, uh, software. And then if there's a positive case, we will go back, watch that, the huddle, video the game and identify the positive contact. And we have to calculate minutes that they're exposed, the other people are exposed to the positive contact. And then we share that with the county, by which the county identify who would need, uh, contact with the contact tracing, who would need to be quarantined. We did that multiple times last year and that's going to, they're recommending that continue this year for indoor. Outdoor, you do not have to wear a mask, it's not required. However, if students or staff want to, they definitely can. Mr. Gannon, the ideas here, we did have a discussion, him and I, although we, he did meet with his coaches, indicate that if you're outdoor during practice, make sure you're distance, you don't want to huddle together for coaching points any duration of time. You know, make sure people are spread out. If you huddle together outdoor, you really should be wearing masks. So this, that's the difference between indoor and outdoor. This slide here is just to kind of, you're wanting a lot of information, just to narrow it down again. But these are all the resources that we use. And I spoke about this earlier, but as we show this information, just know that this is not made in isolation. We put a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of communication, various stakeholders, uh, to make sure that we're making the very best possible decision for health and safety and instruction for our students, staff, and the community. This next slide speaks about what we're looking at going forward. So Broom County Department of Health, they had a meeting on Monday that was with just Broom County Department of Health. The guidance that the school district, we did not submitted questions to them. So they're going to get this information out to us later this week. And some of the questions are using a daily screener. Uh, pretty much, I'm sure they're going to come back and say, yes, you need a daily screener in your school setting. Uh, specific contact tracing procedures, as we looked at what we filed last year, it does differ from what CDC is recommending. And Broom County is looking at the CDC recommendations, and they're going to come up with a plan to advise all the districts on how we will handle, in conjunction with the Department of Health, how we will handle contact tracing. And then also, there is possibly COVID testing in schools. And again, that's going to be in collaboration with Broom County Department of Health, and they're going to give us more guidance on that. So we're waiting for this guidance to come out later this week. As soon as we get that, we will put that together. And then we'll ensure it's available on our website. And on this slide, we're looking at the, uh, process of developing the final plans for academic support and quarantine. So for instance, if we have to, uh, build the closure for whatever reason, we most likely were going to go remote instructions. What if you have a full class that needs to be quarantined, say the elementary building? Well, you, we could go remote during that time for elementary. It could be full remote, those elementary classrooms. The secondary gets complicated. What, you know, if you have a math classroom, it needs to be quarantined, all the students, but those students, they travel that building, and there are multiple other classes. So now, they can't be in those other classes if they're home quarantined. How do we educate them? We're not going to be able to dispose the whole secondary building for that. So we're coming up with plans. Uh, we have a lot of different options involving different stakeholders, bargaining units. And we're coming up with some plans on how that will work. And also, what if you have partial class, two or three students that need to be quarantined? We're looking at how we can do that through asynchronous work and also maybe some Zoom time with teachers after school. But all of that is, you know, works right now. We're planning that still, uh, speaking with stakeholders.
And, and I'd like to add, according to the board's information, is that we were notified by the FAB that if we go to full remote, uh, for, for a class or for a building or for a district, they will, again, once again this year, they will count that as a day of attention. So that is something they needed to consider on our way. So if we are forced to go to full remote, tell them, you know, please, we will not do that.
So this is slide 18. It said we have 19 slides. So the last slide is comments uh, from the board event. I know I went through a lot of information quickly. And this is just more of a summary of our plan. It is on the website. And if you do have a copy, that's fine. Can you take the board? Any verification?
We have a ballpark estimate when we get the, the Department of Health Department and testing.
Yeah, it's, we, I put a phone call in with the gentleman that's going to be supporting us. I expect that to be communicated with him tomorrow. And then we'll go from there. I know they're reaching out to all the districts with that. And they're going to collaborate with us for the testing through Broom. Waiting on Tewa County to see if we have one building in.
If the CDC, the New York State Department of Health, the Broom County, they can reflect on recommendations. Which one will best follow per our issue that we might have with our insurance company? We're going to follow down to the other.
Depends what the, what the regulation is. I mean, I don't think we can give you a hard pass rule on that. Again, now, we have a little bit more to consider this time. And that, uh, now that we have our health, we're saying we must follow CDC and the health officials. Now, we'll have to take that into consideration too. Which we had last year, we were following the Department of Health guidance. So this year, when they said they weren't going to put that out. So the news from the government now, they will be putting out the. Here's what he had, you know, so this is a living document. It's subject to change. As, as we saw last year, as we're seeing right now, teams come up on, almost on a daily basis. And, uh, we need to take Black's. With the operations, through whatever, from now to next week, uh, the health department, they're issued a. So what you saw tonight is what we currently have information on, what we're dealing with, and how we, we just feel that we can provide. Yes, indicated that this is draft at this point in time.
We have, uh, we're done. All right, uh, more like, all business, uh, your improvement for, uh, extracurricular charging, by the motion of the, uh, the. Linda and Dino, question for comment. Over the papers, uh, both, same. Uh, I have a motion to accept schedules A, B, and C, and T9 scheduled two until after our second executive session. Uh, and, uh, Dino, question for comment. All the papers say hi. Uh, both, same. Uh, resolution one, amendment of board number, a kind of motion. Linda and Earth, question for comment. All the papers say hi. Uh, all, same.
And just as a little bit of a repeat of the process of the policy committee consists of Tom Comerford, Dino, Tony, Shelley and myself, we reviewed these, the six that were both proposals to tweak here just really haven't been looked at for some time, so this brings them up to speed and gets it consistent with current regulations. And the other two that are supposed to be rescinded are resumed. And so now we look to the voice of the public. Is it the, in the part here of the meetings where any topic can be addressed to the board during this conference? We provided a sign sheet, participants must make all comments in person, comments without a physical statement or staff agreement. Addressing the board, please provide your name. Also, any sort of closer, uh, just, uh, address. And in due precise respectability channels, the board does reserve the right to correct any misinformation. Board also has the right to limit comments on particular subjects. By law, the board will not commit any public statements regarding private students, physical activity or legal issues. Members of the public who wish to address the board privately should contact the district clerk, this is one of the requirements. And so, uh, we.
Christine Haven.
Okay, I'm going to.
So this, this goes.
I would like to thank you for allowing me to speak here. I am here to voice my concerns regarding the mask issue for the upcoming school year. I understand the controversy and the differing opinions when it comes to masks. We have been told by our governor over the last year and a half how we need them to stop the spread. It has been drilled into our heads over and over again, and the media has done nothing but spew fear for the last year and a half about this deadly virus. However, tonight I would like to speak to you about common sense. These are the masks that I bought from a local store, and these are the masks that our kids have been wearing for the last year and a half. As you can read right on the box, it clearly states that these are not for medical use. Some of the packages don't say anything at all. And in no place on any of the packages I looked at, does it say these masks will protect you from a virus? That is because they do not protect you from punch contacting the COVID virus or any other virus. These masks, by the same way, are the nap, the mask that I wear at work at a hospital as a nurse. Our boxes at the hospital also say these masks will not protect you from a virus. So my question is, how contagious is COVID if the, the medical staff at the hospitals are not concerned? And we don't have masks to protect us? As you've heard by now, a virus is much too small to be contained by a mask. It easily passes through the fibers of the masks. And what about the cotton cloth masks like the one that I'm wearing? These definitely do not protect from a virus or stop transmission. You all see, you see these masks have done over the last year and a half is give people a false sense of security. Let's look at it from a common sense point of view. Remember how we had to wear a mask to walk into a restaurant and then sit down at a table? Why is that? Does the virus just magically disappear once we're sitting at a booth? Was it only present while we were walking to our table? If you cough or sneeze at a booth while you're sitting in the restaurant, did the droplets just sit there in front of you and not get circulated throughout the restaurant? What about the pieces of plexiglass in grocery stores and restaurants? It's a virus not capable of going over, under, or around them? How about our kids eating lunch in school? They have a mask on all day, but then sit down to eat lunch and take it off. So if you keep them six feet apart, does that mean they still can't spread the virus in the air? Does a six foot distance guarantee that if they cough, those droplets aren't going to reach the students around them? You don't have to be educated or have a medical background to see how ridiculous and nonsensical these restrictions are becoming. There is no logic to these rules. Did you know that during 2020, the proportion of mental health related ER visits among adolescents aged 12 to 17 years increased by 31% compared to those in 2019? In May of 2020, during the COVID pandemic, girls were more likely than boys to attempt suicide based on the ER data. During February 21st of March through March 20th this year, suspected suicide attempts were 50.6% higher among girls aged 12 to 17 than the same time in 2019. Among boys aged 12 to 17, suspected suicide attempts increased by 3.7%. This information I got is directly from the CDC's own morbidity and mortality weekly report. It is widely known that mental health issues in children and teenagers increased greatly during the COVID lockdowns. The masks and social isolation have greatly impacted our children over the last year and a half. They need to get back to normal and have normal interactions with their friends again. In fact, they've been interacting with friends all summer, going to amusement parks, having sleepovers, playing miniature golf, and doing all the normal things that kids do. And without the use of masks. And guess what? They've been fine. I personally have not heard of any deaths of local students from doing those things together. They are all anxiously awaiting a normal return to school and sports. And so I implore you as administrators and teachers who are supposed to be advocating for the children you work with all day long. Please also consider their mental health. If you are fearful of contracting COVID, you certainly have the right to wear a mask. You can leave the decision to mask up to each family, and if there are families who prefer their kids wear masks or they have kids who are immunocompromised, they also can choose to wear a mask. You also have the right to get a COVID vaccine if it makes you feel safer. Or if you're that scared, maybe you could take a job teaching from home since parents more than ever are deciding to homeschool. Well, please don't push your fear and these ridiculous restrictions on our children. You are supposed to be advocating for them just like we are. I know my comments probably won't make any difference as I see you've already made your decision. Since you are telling us about all the research, where are those studies? I would like you to prove to us how these masks work. As I've shown you, these masks are not effective. All you have to do is look at the box and read it for yourself. So I would like you, the board members, to explain to all of us exactly how these are helping during this pandemic and helping to prevent the spread of COVID. This has turned into nothing more than a game of Simon Says. The governor tells us to wear masks, so wear your mask. The Department of Health tells you to wear a mask, so wear your mask. Where is the proof that they work? We deserve to see proof as parents. I have spoken to a pathologist recently who told me that the cases of RSV and para influenza three are higher than ever in the last year for children. And that the masks are causing our children to be sick. This is not okay. The only reason Governor Cuomo was able to mandate masks was because the legislature gave him emergency powers. And now the state of emergency has ended. Kathy Hochul would have to declare another state of emergency again if granted power by the legislature in order to mandate masks. There is no current state of emergency, therefore this is not legal. Thank you for your time.
Gabby Pisanti. Good evening. My name is Gabby Pisanti. Um, I'm just wearing this mask because I was told that if we weren't to wear them, this meeting wouldn't cease. So I don't think it's actually doing anything, but I'm just wearing it because, like she said, Simon says. So I was here at last board of education meeting, demanding that my children be on site five days a week for school. And masks should be optional, not mandated. An email with communication memo was sent out to the best appearance and guardians last Friday, stating that five days a week on site was being offered since September, which is great news. However, in the same communication is stated, all students, staff and visitors will be required to wear a mask regardless of vaccination status while inside any school building. I am here tonight to let you, the board members, know that my demand regarding no masks, regardless of indoors or outdoors, has not changed. What authority does the school board have to require masks? Again, the CDC or whoever else can recommend whatever they want. Their recommendations, that is it. As I mentioned in the last board of education meeting, I'm not suggesting banning masks. What I am saying is that the decision to wear or not to wear a mask should be left up to the parents and the guardians of the children. The communication continues saying the CDC has recommended that in conjunction with proper masking, schools should maintain at least three feet of social distancing between students within classroom where feasible. The CDC has also indicated that physical distancing is not required on school buses. However, students and staff will be required to wear masks while on board. Do you realize how insane that sounds? So in the classroom where there's more square footage versus a bus, the kids and the staff have to social distance, but they don't have to on a bus? That makes zero sense, which supports my claim from the last board meeting. The CDC recommendation is conflicting, if not confusing. Today, I'm not going to cite sources regarding the negative consequences for forcing children to wear masks, nor will be citing sources how there is a low, low transmission rate among kids in the school setting. Instead, I'm going to share a quick personal story with you. Earlier, I stated my name is Gabby Pisanti. That is not my legal name. My legal maiden name was Tuva Bill. Now that is not a common name you will find in the U.S., but it is pretty common in Vietnam. I'm the first generation American born from the Bill family. Now, why am I sharing this information with you? It's because what I'm doing here this evening is advocating and fighting for my children. Pales to what my parents and what my brother did for me. My dad fought in the Vietnam War. He held a higher rank within the South Vietnamese Army and fought side by side with the Americans. Once the US withdrew from Vietnam, my dad fled to Singapore. The US took him as a refugee and I am forever grateful for that. He was going to Arkansas and then to New York to live with my aunt. Meanwhile, my mom and my brother, who was elementary age at that time, was stuck in Vietnam. My grandmother scraped and saved to help my mom and brother escape from communist Vietnam. It took years to save up. Over the span of three years, they attempted to escape three times. Finally, the third attempt, they made it to the boat. Do you remember in history class learning about the boat people? My mom and my brother were boat people. We spent three weeks at sea and it wasn't on some glorious cruise boat. It was basically a rowboat. Three weeks at sea and they finally made it to Indonesia. They, there they lived in a refugee camp until they were legally able to come to the United States. My dad did not see his wife or his son for nine years. Once he enlisted in the war, he was about to come back to the village for the birth of my brother. That was it. After nine years, my dad, my mom and brother were united in the best country on earth, United States of America. All three of them fought. My dad fought the North Vietnamese Army. My mom and my brother fought starvation, the sea, cold temperatures, hot temperatures to give me a chance to live in a society in a country where I can choose to live, live as I see fit. And not in a country where a communist government dictates how I live. Now, I, as a free American citizen, if I can't leave my comfy home, get in my comfy car and drive 10 minutes to get here and stand and advocate to fight for my children, what a slap in the face that would be for my parents and brother. No mask requirement, period. Prior to two weeks ago, I have never attended a board of education meeting in person. No longer will I be sitting on the sidelines. No longer will be on autopilot. For me, it's time to do the do. No longer will I think the school district is doing what is best for my children because I am the parent and I decide what is best for my children. I'd like to close with the following. For the parents and guardians to feel the same as me about masks, for being ashamed or being shamed, or perhaps you feel made that your thoughts are fringe. Let me tell you this, there is nothing shameful or fringe for standing up and advocating for your children. Thank you for your time.
Oh, I don't have anything written and I apologize for being overly emotional because that's just where we're at at this point. This is my child. This is not any of your children. This is my child and she should not be masked. All summer long, through JCC, hundreds of other kids, not a mask. Through gymnastics all summer long, not a mask. Cheerleading practice, football practice, not a mask. Since the last day of school, this girl has not worn a mask. Has she been sick? No, not, not at all. Since she started kindergarten in basketball, loved it, COVID hit and it ended abruptly. Since then, she doesn't like school. Why would this girl want to go back to school where she is isolated from her friends, forced to breathe under a mask and then nobody can hear her? School is not fun for this girl anymore. Going in the second grade, she doesn't like school and this is your guys' fault because you are the board of education and you are forcing her to wear a mask and be isolated. The governor today said, you know, the mandate thing, it, it's not legal right now. It's just what she's said. And until it's legal, I would sincerely hope that you guys as a board of education can make masks optional for the kids. If the parents choose that they don't want their kids to wear masks, then let them be like that. Don't force us to have a mask on our children. These are our children. They're not your children. Let them go to school and be with their friends. Let them, if you're going to force a mask, let them sit down at their desks and take their masks off. Put the plexiglass barriers back up. Do not force my child to be at school all day with a mask. Last year, at the very end, I had to call the principal because my daughter came home beet red, had a headache, had a stomach ache. I had a cold because she didn't get mask breaks in her classroom. And you know what the principal told me? I'm sure that she got a mask break while she was eating lunch. That's, that's what she deserves, a mask break during lunch? No, the next day, principal called me back and let me know that her teacher now implements mask breaks. So if bottom line is, if you guys are going to mandate masks against our, our wishes as parents of these childrens, I respectfully ask that you let them take their masks off when they sit. Give them mask breaks. Do not leave it up to these children to take their masks off because they don't. Because you guys have caused fear. You have caused fear in this little girl. She's scared in her classroom to ask the teacher for a mask break, not because of what's going on at home or anywhere else. Because of when she's in the classroom.
Oh, that's the visitor log. This is the voice of the public.
Well, I signed up, done that thing out there. I don't know.
Okay, fine, go ahead. Can I have your name, please?
George Paris. You're all very excited to hear from me because I've been pretty excited. I've been a tattoo artist 21 years. Doesn't mean a whole lot to a lot of people. The only thing that really doesn't really matter in that whole statement is I'm, I'm bloodborne airborne pathogen certified in three states. New York, Pennsylvania and Florida, Florida being the hardest one. So what I, what I get out of this whole thing is I, I know a little bit about how viruses work. I've been working with viruses for 21 years. People that come in and write and sign my release forms aren't necessarily honest about what kind of inflictions or problems or things that they have. So I'm probably dealing with HIV, I'm dealing with hepatitis C. I'm dealing with a whole slew of different types of things. I deal with it on a daily basis. Never had an issue, never once, never wore a mask. So to move forward, my son Roman goes to basketball school. He really enjoys it. He has a lot of fun. One problem is my son is prone to children's migraine. Problem with that is masks now every day. His face was flushed red. He told me he got a headache. All the kid wanted to do was lay down. Now I'm pumping this kid with a liquid hydroprofen every day. How do you think his stomach and his digestive system is going to react to that? How well do you think that that's going to, how long do you think that can last? Now, we've heard a lot of stuff from a lot of parents already here about how these masks don't work and they don't work. We're all sitting here wearing masks like a bunch of niggas. There's no reason, these are, these don't do anything. I also paint. And I'll tell you right now, I wear a paint ventilator with two charcoal cartridges on and I paint. And I can smell and taste every little bit of it. So what do you think this is going to do on a charcoal castor paint thing? Can't even keep painting. Um, I, I don't think any of you are going to listen to me. I don't think you're going to hear any of us. Because you're financially motivated. You're already talking about your insurance company and your funding. So whatever we're saying here is just going to fall on deaf ears. But I guarantee you won't forget me. One of these people here, Mr. Ainharn, last, last, I haven't, this is the first board meeting I've ever come to. But I do follow it on Facebook page called, that's only to make your parents, make the vessel, teach our kids. I watch every, every week or whenever these things come up. Last time, Mr. Ainharn said that only 50% of the people wore four masks and 50% were against. I'm going to show you, all these people right here are against masks. I don't think there's one person in this whole group that wants, that says, yeah, that's a good idea. What are we going to do about it? We're the parents. If I came to your house, told your child, I'm going to put you in this dog cage, but it's for your own good. Do you allow that? Why would I allow you guys to sit here and tell me what I kind of can't do with my child? At what point did we lose, did we lose control of our children? At what point did we say, you guys got it, we're going to bow out? We're just the parents. What, where did our say go? Anyone? No one has an answer?
They don't answer us right now. They wait for later.
And we sat through all of your stuff. We waited 15 minutes while you guys did your little meeting, which was rude, but because, you know, we were supposed to be here, I said, and you guys took your little side piece, I decided to go and did your own thing. Kind of rude. You know what? That's fine. And we had to sit through the spells, product introduction thing. You could have just taken the parents thing and you could have done all that stuff later on. We're sitting back there, we're chewing at the bit here, trying to get, get our, our voices heard. Come on. Those things got to give here. And I don't think any of us are going to go away till something is done about this whole situation. Masks are nonsense. If you don't have to wear a mask on a bus, but you gotta wear it in school. Like the girl said, bring back the plastic providers. Let the kids sit with no masks in school. This new governor coming in, she, there's no emergency thing. She has no, there's no mandate. She can't mandate anything. And a mandate is a recommendation, not a law. It's a recommendation, which means you can either do that or you can choose not to. But are we going to make the right choice for our kids? Listen, I'm standing here dying right now. The last thing I want to discuss with you guys is, just, just for an example, in the past year and a half, two years, whatever it's been, I never quarantine, I never wore my mask, I can't stand it. I saw the BS right out of the gate. Everybody has their own opinion or a time to it. But that was my choice. When I had to wear, I got really sick. I was sick for six months and I said, that's it, I've got the COVID, must be it. Couldn't breathe, I was tired constantly, I was exhausted. And if I tried to sleep on my left side, I couldn't breathe. Went to the doctor, Dr. Khan. He said I have a lung infection. And that's all he would say, non-pretinol, an inhaler, on some other inhaler that's supposed to heal my lungs. And it got to the point where I'm taking all this medicine and the happening, I asked him for a second opinion. They put me with another doctor, apparently there's two doctors at work. The other doctor Khan put me on another set of prednisone. He goes, yeah, you have a lung infection. So I'm like, what does this mean? I have, I have to have both. This, this has got to be what it's like, right? Can't breathe, it's real deep down in the bottom parts of my lungs, I can't get a full breath, can't sleep, can't do anything. Walk up the stairs, I'm lightheaded, that's it, right? I have, nope, nope, I've got a lung infection, sir. Well, coming up on six months, I'm sitting over here at Skylark and a lady comes up to me and she goes, excuse me, sir, she's like, didn't I see you in the pulmonologist's office? I go, yeah, she goes, well, I'm one of the nurses there. I says, okay, she goes, I'm here to tell you, your lung infection was by your mask. I said, I had a feeling that that was the case. And I said, well, I appreciate you coming to me and telling me. Well, I went back to my pulmonologist for my final appointment and he walked in the door all happy, like, hey, hey, honey. Right out of the gate, I said, I want to have a conversation with you, I had one of your nurses, I'm not going to say who, approached me in the Skylark. She told me that my lung infection was directly caused by wearing the mask. He looked, he put his head down, he nodded, he's like, you're absolutely right. I said, then why wouldn't any, why wouldn't anybody tell me how you this begin with? He's like, you just, that's all, give me that. I said, so now what, now what do we do? Now you've taught me, two, two things of prednisone, I put on 30 pounds, you got me on inhalers, you got me on all this other stuff. What's, what's the cure? How, how do I get rid of this problem? Take the mask off.
Yeah, my name's Mike Kirsch. I live at 60 Brown Road. I spoke here a month ago. I mentioned that I'm a board certified pediatrician and a PhD in biochemistry. And I prepared, in preparing these remarks, I reviewed journal articles, listened to serious, non-political scientists and physicians from all sides of the issue. But it's pretty clear right now, the issue is not a matter of data and science. I think that all of the eloquent speakers before me gave a very convincing argument. While none of you will likely speak, I can imagine any one of you disagrees with that. But as was pointed out at the beginning of this meeting, it's a matter of the insurance company. A month ago, when I spoke here, I asked pointedly, you guys have the authority. And I was told very clearly that you guys were concerned about liability by not following governing board. Then two weeks ago, you guys were given the authority and I'm sure to all of your relief, that onus was removed from you. So, since I imagine most or all of you recognize the folly in these masks and I'm more than happy to discuss the science, the clinical studies to support all of these things that were said here. One important point or two, several important points that I still want to bring up because it's obviously those new rules about the insurance companies kind of takes the legs out of many of my arguments. But it turns out, and I'm curious about this, all last year, several times a week, we received phone calls, recorded phone calls telling us about cases, 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 cases. It turns out that a positive test for COVID does not constitute a case. According to the CDC's own recommendations and guidelines from a 2015 paper, before all of this COVID occurred, they made it clear that a case is not defined by a positive test. We also know over the, this past year, that there are many, many, many false positive tests. So the numbers that we're hearing about cases, a great majority of them are false positives. But while we received these calls about a positive case, we were told, well, you don't have to do anything with that information unless you're called secondarily. So then I wondered, well, what was the purpose of calling us almost weekly or more than weekly about these cases other than to keep up the fear about COVID? As was eloquently brought up earlier, we are now seeing an onslaught of mental health issues, depression, suicidal ideations. We also know the data is very clear about the developmental delay that has resulted from all of these interventions that have occurred throughout our society and our schools specifically. Developmental delay, educational delay, it's clear. So while you were speaking earlier tonight about having screaming as a school year begins, like we did last year, having them fill out those papers every day. Are you going to institute a Are you going to institute a screening for mental health and depression issues? Because that is a far, far greater impairment that will occur as a result of the interventions. That all of you are imposing. Again, going back to a month ago, when I asked, are you, are you? Able to change your policies? I was told it was really an issue of concern about liability. Well, every intervention that we do has risks and benefits. The risks to the interventions that are occurring with mask mandates and size, social separation, social isolation. That is what you guys are imposing on our students. And while it's extraordinarily astronomically low risk of a child or student transmitting a virus. To other students or adults, especially if they're asymptomatic. The risk of depression, suicidal ideation and other mental health issues is very real. And these are a result of the. Impositions that you are suggesting. So I had several other issues, but again, I understand, it's a difficult, it's an also a possible decision. To be a lone school board and to be the one school board that's gonna deviate from the CDC recommendations and, and all that. I understand that. So could you at least do as much as you possibly legally can? Such as the most reasonable thing, as was mentioned earlier. Let the kids wear the masks like we've done in restaurants for a year and a half, but when you sit at your table, take your mask off. Because the studies have shown that there is a very high CO2, carbon dioxide concentration. That's localized when children wear a mask. After three minutes, measured CO2 concentrations were higher. 250% higher than OSHA standards would allow. You couldn't work in a factory or a workplace if you're exposed to that high CO2 concentration. So that is, not only are these policies anti-science, or anti-medicine, or anti-children. And they're cruel. And finally, thank you for your indulgence. You all have a great opportunity to do something great here, to do as much as you can. For the best interest of the students within the parameters, I understand, insurance companies, what they require. But do as much as you can and even advocate. I talk, I don't know, have any of you called the state and say, this is ridiculous, this goes against science. So it's, it's, but you have a great opportunity to do something great. You also have a great opportunity, which I think you're taking, to do something horrible. It's morally, ethically. Irresponsible. Thank you for your attention.
I didn't, I wasn't planning on saying anything. Ryan. And my last name and everything is on the board outside. I don't want to put it up on here, but. I just want to point out masks are kind of like shoes. We have the double layers if you want, you wear socks and shoes if you want, we wear sandals, some masks are thinner than others. I've noticed that Linda, I don't know how to pronounce your last name, but you have not been wearing your shoes this entire time. You don't know what's on this rug, you don't know what's on this floor and you can walk out of here and bring it home. Just like we can't see what's in the air, we don't know what we're bringing home. But guess what? We have been perfectly fine. And I am sure this entire summer, you all have been out with gatherings, friends, wherever, not wearing your masks. And guess what? You have been fine. And so have we. And I think we are just a few and you may not be intimidated by us. But we are speaking for hundreds and thousands of people in this community right now that do not want to wear masks. Like the pediatrician just said, the CO2 levels in our children's faces is not even what OSHA would allow in a building. So, that's all.
But what I would like to offer though is that since this is not a discussion for dialogue. You are absolutely all of you communicating with the district, contacting the district, either by phone. And if there are folks who are interested in having some sort of discussion. That shall be the appropriate way and the most effective way to communicate with the district. And have, and answers are also going to be on the website too. So on that note, we have the future board meetings. The next meeting will be Tuesday, September 14th. There'll be a 6 p.m. regular meeting here in the board conference room. Tuesday, September 28th, that also is a 6 p.m. regular meeting here in the board conference room. And Tuesday, October 12th, that will be a regular meeting also here in the board conference room. And with that, we'll be motion to, kind of motion to adjourn. We'll be getting a session to discuss a, discuss a personal matter. Got a email and. Question or comments.
Shut this.